Today is Friday, September 26th. It's a meeting of the Acusha Board of Selectmen. This is a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, as a reminder, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise to your place.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the forty states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the purpose of this meeting is to set the Fall Town Meeting warrant. We'll go over articles. Also gonna do that. Few that are pro forma, but we'll still, nonetheless, work through those. Article one is to settle payment for prior year bills. That totals $20,157. Air golf course staples, staples, staples. Fire department, electric, air cleaning. There's a lot of cats and dogs here. Cleaning specialists, legal KP law, soil board, attorney land, for Haven Neighborhood News, for Haven Neighborhood News, town buildings, Liker, 500 bucks. Tyler Technologies, 5,600. School, 206 bucks. Board of Selectmen, 520 bucks. Again, totaling $20,157.61.
Mr. Chairman, the staff recommends that we fund this from free cash.
Alright, so I guess we'll go through these. If there's any holds, we'll just hold those and then come back. Is that what you guys want to do?
Yeah.
Item number two is amend FY25, operating budget article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate transfer from free cash or otherwise provide sums of money to fund amended amounts in various accounts. See the table. They were previously voted on article 31 of the June 16, 2025 meeting. This is... Just going through the red stuff here. This was submitted by... So this article, amend and reconcile budgets to expect imbalances. FY26 budget contains items that require an adjustment based on final appropriation if approved. So this deals with the Planning Board, correct?
Planning Board and Board of Health, Mr. Chairman. Planning Board is requesting $9,430 for salaries for... To augment previous salaries of a senior clerk. Board of Health is request... Well, actually, my office is requesting for Board of Health salary adjustment to... for a principal clerk. Based on a reclassification that we did with ASME and the town. Mr. Inkley was involved in that. And that's for $3,520.
Can I ask for a hold on that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I guess Mark's here, right, from the Planning Board? You know, Mark, when we had talked about this, you know, I agreed to suggest you put forward an article. The Board would discuss it. We've gone back and forth. We're still trying to get that department organized in principle, I think. You know, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I also respect the intent of the Board last spring. But if you want to make your case again, feel free to do that. And then the Board has some reservations.
You want to do that now?
Yeah. Alright. I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Thank you. For the record, Mark Francois, Chairman, Acusha Planning Board. Just like you had read, we had the... We had a clerk, a part-time clerk for the Planning Board. She left in February. The clerk's position was defunded, I guess you could say, for the spring meeting. I guess because of budget cuts. We have gone back and forth. We've had department head meetings about trying to consolidate clerks. I know that the ZBA has been consolidated with the Building Department. And now we're still in limbo. Right now, the Planning Board has a part-time planner. We have no clerk. And we have a little bit of help going with minutes. But basically, after talking with department heads, after having a lot of department head meetings, it's just something that the Planning Department needs. We need a minimum of part-time clerk. That's all we're asking for, is the same as we had in fiscal '25. Budget, we have $4,000 some odd dollars in our budget right now. All we're gonna need is another approximately $9,000... $9,439 to get us to the end of this year. Things were running good when we had our part-time, and that's all I am requesting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
After going back and forth from negotiations and multiple MOUs and multiple pivots, I have to say that as of right now, doing this could jeopardize and unwind an ASME contract that I'm at the final stages on. Originally, when we discussed it, you have... The plan was to have the building clerk, Ms. Walsh, take on the burden of the planning clerk duties, being in the same building, with planning experience, with building experience. And I know we kind of pivoted to the ZBA aspect of it. But that was temporary, just to make sure anything didn't go into constructive approval. I have a couple candidates that have reached out in regards to the ZBA. I'm still sticking by what I said originally, that Ms. Walsh is more than capable of handling this. And being in the same building, I don't see any problems with the communication. The number one thing, to echo what Select McGasper said at a town meeting, was if it doesn't work, we can reassess. And there was never a plan put in place for it to work. It wasn't tried. And I think backpedaling at this point doesn't make sense. It's my personal opinion. I still think Ms. Walsh can handle it without a problem.
I understand what you're saying, but it's very difficult. And as you would know, if there's a... If there's a person in one office, and there's a person in a completely different part of the building at another level, it's... The communication, being able to just talk to that person, ask that person questions. There's a lot more that goes on with the clerk for the Planning Department than just accepting permits. We've gone over this with department heads. Everybody kind of thinks it's, you know, the clerk just, oh, got a new permit, that's it. There's a lot of communication that happens between the planner and the clerk for the Board. It's... It would be good and easier. It would just work better. We've discussed with other Plannin... Other department heads, and they all agreed that it would not work. I just left the Building Department. It would not work having somebody in a different office. Not saying that she's not capable. Without a doubt, she's capable. But to have her do planning, building, and ZBA, or now you're looking to maybe put ZBA somewhere else? It's not like we're asking for a lot of money. It's less than $10,000. There's... Between lots of funds and different budgets that you have, you can find $10,000 to get us by. It's not like it's an extravagant amount of money. And the Planning Department is the department that works on getting grants. It's the department that's gonna change some zoning so we can get some more commercial property, so we can help this town get more commercial income. If we don't get some help in that department, none of that happens. We're trying to finish the master plan right now. When we had the 2008 master plan, nothing got done. And if we don't get some help in that office, it's gonna... The same thing's gonna happen.
Mr. Chairman, all due respect, I disagree. And I'll disagree with what you just said. I was just in the Building Department from what you just said. I've had multiple conversations with our Building Commissioner, and he is all for this. I've had multiple conversations with the clerk, and she is all for this and more than capable. Now, to be easier, and you're saying it's not gonna work, and multiple department heads are saying it's not gonna work, multiple department heads have no say in what happens in this anyway. They wouldn't know it's not gonna work unless we try, which was the original agreement. At town meeting, Select McGasper said to you, if it doesn't work, we can reassess and figure it out.
And how long is this gonna take? How long is this gonna take?
She can be operational in 15 minutes. And from a room here to a room here, it's a phone, an email, she can take a walk. We can put a sign on the door that says, "Right away."
So if it's not about the money, why don't we just... Why can't we just do it?
Because we're not following through on what we agreed on originally. It was discussed. We made the determination, and the deal was, we'll try it. If it doesn't work, we'll reassess. And we haven't even tried.
And who's the person that decides if it's working or not working come spring meeting?
Whoever happens to be in the town administrator's seat, in correlation with the department heads involved in both. So building and planning, and then you can discuss it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I agree with everything Mr. Inkley just said, and I don't think I need to say too much more. We did sign, two months ago, a memorandum of agreement to make our building department clerk the Planning Board clerk. That was an ongoing negotiations with Mr. Inkley and the town administrator. It was agreed upon by the union and the employee to do the job. I was just told last week by the building inspector, we haven't even tried to see if it would work. Period. I told you this before, Mark, and I'm adamant about what I said. If I make a promise, I will not break that promise. We didn't even try it, and I said to them, well, if we didn't try it, how do we know it's not gonna work? All I'm saying is, and I told that to the town residents, and I'm not gonna backtrack on town residents when I speak to them and we get their approval to do something and approve a budget. What I'm trying to say is, as Mr. Inkley said, put the ball in motion, let's see where the defaults are, if at all any. We come back to the table. That's that Planning Board, that building department clerk, Planning Board clerk, will speak to us and say, I'm overwhelmed, whatever it may be. This is the problem. We sit down, the Board can sit down, discuss it. Try to figure out the problem, if we can fix the problem or not. If it doesn't happen, we go back to Spring Town Meeting and get the appropriation for a 19 and a half hour clerk. Period. So, right now, I'm 100% in agreement with Mr. Inkley. He negotiated his butt off with ASME to get this to work. We signed an MOA, and that MOA was basically taken, thrown in the garbage, and said, we don't care what that MOA says, we're moving in our own direction. I can't see that happening.
Okay, so, can... On camera, can we come to an agreement that Lori is up and going within the next couple of weeks?
100%.
Thank you. And then we reassess in two months, three months? As two complete boards, not, you know, two people outside without Planning Board's input? Like this was... This originally happened without any Planning Board input. We reassess, and then we have enough time to readjust when spring meeting comes?
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna be assessing it every 30 days, the way I would like to see this go, right? We talk to the employees, see what's going on, see what inefficiencies we may have, work with this Board to correct those inefficiencies, if possible. And if not, Mark, we reassess as best we can. It's not gonna work. Then we can tell the residents, it's not gonna work for these reasons. And we're asking for, at that point, it'll be a reinstatement, because I think we left, let's call it five grand. I think your original budget for a clerk was 20 grand. It'll be $15,000, nothing nine and change. The reason it's nine and change now is because partial of the year's gone by, and you won't have to fill that vacancy. That's why you're seeing less than 10 grand. But it's really gonna be an appropriation of $15,000 additional dollars. And I told you this before, give me a good reason why it didn't work. But we haven't even tried it. That's the problem. And what we need to do is make sure that the town planner and that clerk are working cohesively together to make sure it works. And if it can't work, then I would expect the opinion from both of those two individuals to tell us why it's not working, and let us try to figure out a way that it can work. And if that doesn't work, 15 grand reinstatement, part-time clerks back in the Planning Board office. I'll tell you that right now. And it will be a Board decision in the spring. But I just told you what my perception would be on that clerk's position at that point.
Good.
Two weeks.
You have my word on that, Mark.
Thank you.
Facilitate it within two weeks. I agree with Mr. Gasper about reviewing every 30 days to make sure it's going smoothly. And I stand behind what he said and what I've said. If it doesn't work, we will make it right.
Good. Mark, I would ask that when we do this, you know, talk to Lori about having her in some physical space in that department. Nothing says that she has to be tethered to the Building Department. Correct. Forced four walls, you know, like if she sets up a spot in the Planning Board, and if people have building, they can go up there and vanish from the Planning Board, right? She doesn't have to be stuck in that department.
And I have no problem setting up some time to sit down and figure out strategically what is the most efficient way to do this in regards to staffing, when the planner's here, and when Lori's in different positions. And I'll sit down with both the Planning Board and the Building Department to come up with a plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to strike the Planning Board request for $9,439 from Article 2.
Okay.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman...
The other one, is that one sticking around?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, then, the bottom line would be $3,520, and the staff would ask that that come from free cash.
So we need a motion?
I just... I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All's in favor?
Gentlemen, at my point of view, Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna make motions individually, we did not make a motion for Article 1.
Right, I was gonna come back to that one.
Well, actually, you've got the staff recommendation.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve Article 1, we'll just do it that way.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's just do this. Let's go through each one, approve each one.
Yep.
Make it... Sorry.
If we hold, that'll warrant discussion, right?
Right, yep. Alright, Article 3, amend FY2025 capital budget. Article 22, at town meeting, June 16, 2025, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from free cash or available funds or otherwise provide sums of money to fund amended amounts in various accounts. See the attached table. This is for $9,000 for accounts on aging. HVAC.
This is an increase because of the original amount was 40,000. That was bid nine months ago. All the vendors have come back.
Yep.
The increase is, I'm asking for $9,000. We've talked to the vendors. They have various, blaming various things that have happened on the national level.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
To sum it all up, there's five different units inside the Council on Aging Building for heating and air conditioning. And when they went in to look at the original units that they thought they were gonna do, they came up with a recommendation to work on all five and replace all five. So the bid came in a bit higher, and that's all it is, a $9,000 supplement to get that job done.
Understood. Next one is for town buildings. Install, upgrade fire alarm for Parting Ways Building, up to exceed $7,000. Next is a request for police cruiser. Looking to do one at 85 grand. TPW street sweeper, an additional $4,000 to what was already appropriated, bringing a grand total of $105,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I'm looking at my older warrant for discussion. I know that Mr. Kelly's presented a newer version, which I'm working off of my older version, because the Police Department did make a request for an unmarked cruiser and then two police cruisers. So, there's a couple of different versions of what amount of money free cash we're gonna be spending at town meeting. And it's obviously, the amount is troubling, but again, talking to... And there's a letter in the back of this about two police cruisers. I think the unmarked cruiser can wait. But there is concern about two cruisers versus one cruiser. So at that point, I just want to mention that to the Board and make sure that the Board's okay, we're just doing one versus two. There's one or two year waiting period. So I'm just bringing that up for the Board's conversation. We can go with one or two cruisers. It's entirely up to the Board.
So, let me ask you this.
The original request was three, one unmarked.
Alright, so, in years past, if I remember correctly, and I don't know how much money's tied up for the school roof with the solar stuff, I think we had, we bought some cruisers out of that solar fund?
So does not... We have, we have something in here for an article for... I think that's the ambulance one? The $52,000? For solar, what's left of Lori's solar revenue?
That would be if you wanted to pay off the school roof ban.
Oh, that was the sub... That's right. So there's $52,000 left in the solar capital fund, Mr. Chairman. And we're using that as a supplemental to free up a little bit of free cash. So there's a couple of different versions that are going on here. Yesterday, when we were sitting down, you're either gonna spend $1.254, 509 million with the ambulance and two cruisers being funded.
Right. I mean, look, I...
Doing things different ways. It reduces the amount of free cash we're spending this time around. Remember, there's roughly $1.9 million available. But no matter what scenario you use, we're gonna be spending somewhere around $1.356 million.
Here's the thing, I mean, in principle, I don't like putting off... We need cruisers, that's something we know we're always gonna need. And you're just constantly chasing your tail and playing catch-up. You know, as far as the funding goes, free cash, if we're gonna pay now, we're paying later. Move forward with two cruisers, but that's just me.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. After some conversations with some people in the inside, understanding why they request these cruisers, I have to feel the same way. I think two cruisers now, or one now, one later, comes out the wash. I'd be okay with doing the two cruisers now, just to get that department operational. And it will actually, eventually lower their maintenance costs as well, simply because they'll actually be able to let these vehicles rest and cycle through appropriately. I'd be okay with two cruisers. I think we can hold off on the unmarked Fanellos as well.
Alright, that's fine. Just as while we're talking about this, I don't want to cause any confusion, but it's fresh in my mind as we're bringing it up. Jamie Lynn, maybe you can, if you can get with the Police Department. I think it would be good, because we put some stuff in the contract regarding details and admin fees. From what I'm understanding, just anecdotally, I see more of our police officers doing the details, which in turn allows us to keep those admin fees versus the... I'm just curious as to what that number is. And, you know, not that it's gonna pay for cruisers, but I just think maybe as a policy, that money that's generated there, we should make a point to put towards capital, you know, capital expenditures like this. Again, that's just, I'm just thinking out loud, but I think it would be good to... I don't want to... We can still go with free cash, but I just think it's good to take a look at that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, basically, your idea is well-suited. The administrative fees, I believe, somewhere around the $50,000 mark, and obviously climbing, right? So that money is, and eventually, those fees go into the free cash at the end of the year. That's where it goes. So it's basically functioning the way you're saying. It is part of how we get derived free cash. So it is technically doing what it's supposed to do, in a sense. But most people don't understand what you just said, so I'm glad that you didn't mention that, so that people know we are collecting from details, administrative fees, which is then technically subsidizing a cruiser, almost a cruiser a year. So, and the reason why we're doing this for everybody at home is because of budget constraints. In the past two years, we had to remove two cruisers from the budget. And that was 150, and now two cruisers are 170.
So looking to... So what's that number now?
$190,000 bottom line figure.
It's $170,000.
For the cruiser?
Mr. Kelly, and that's outfitted, that is correct. It's roughly $85,000.
But the total for the article?
No, so we ain't done. The chairman's still going through the article, we just stopped at cruisers. He hasn't finished all the other capital items.
Alright, so you're...
So, I'll adjust that number at the end, Mr. Chairman. So we're striking the unmarked police cruiser, and we're keeping two cruisers in that article.
Alright, next is additional $4,000 for the street sweeper. And that's additional funds needed to purchase to replace present equipment and disrepair. I hope that's not for the new one we purchased.
You wanna take it, or you want me to try?
Somebody hit something?
When we changed the amount at town meeting, the original amount requested was 275. The amount that we budgeted was 270. In the amended article, the price came in at 274.
Got it. Okay. So we're really, we...
I don't think we did a good enough... Mr. Manad wasn't at the meeting, right? And I don't think we did a good enough job communicating with him, this is the X amount of budget that we have. He just went ahead and said, okay, this is the number, and have a nice day. If it was to me, I would've called the company up and tried to renegotiate the price, saying this is the amount of money we have, can you do it for 270? That didn't take place. You're $4,000 in a jam.
Right, okay. I mean, that's... Unfortunately, that's the shame with public procurement, because the vendors know how much you have in the can, and that's what they're gonna charge you. You know, I mean, that's the thing that sucks about it. But, it is what it is. Alright, next item. So that, what does that bring our grand total to?
With the addition of the second cruiser?
$190.
$190.
There was a request for a...
So, hold on, we ain't done with this article, because right now, with the cruisers being taken out, you're at 201, 250, but we didn't talk about the pump station.
Oh, yeah, okay. Was a request put in for a pump station?
It was. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The reality of it is, is several years back, we thought, through Woodward Current, that we would be able to use those pump stations for residents as well, going up Peckham Road and along Meadow Road. They were put in 25, 30 years ago, whatever it was. You remember several years back, I made a gallant effort to use $100,000 out of retained earnings from Sewer Enterprise Fund, and then I proved to Woodward Current that crap doesn't roll uphill. So we would never be able to tie in any residents, because the pipe goes uphill from the schools. So then we went back to town meeting, we got the $100,000 to put back into Sewer retained earnings, because it's not fair for the sewer users to be paying for a sewer pumping station that none of them are using. So this bill came in tonight, and they were trying to take it from Sewer Enterprise Fund and getting that bill paid. And I said, it's absolutely not coming out of Sewer Enterprise Fund, because we don't have any sewer users in that system. That is a whole, that's a school pumping station. Those two pumping stations belong to the school, it's their responsibility. They just got a new $17 million budget, whatever it is, 16, 17 million dollar budget. They returned last year, I think somewhere in the realm of $300,000. Don't tell me you can't find $12,000 for your repairs of your sewer pumping stations, which by the way, our DDW did most of the work. So, you know, I think it's a slap in the face when you return that much money, and then you're asking us to pay $11,250 to repair a sewer pump station.
Alright, fair enough. So I think that's...
So minus that number, now comes to the $190, Mr. Chairman, on Article 3.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve Article 3?
From the free cash.
Free cash for $190k.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Article 4. See if the town will vote to transfer previously appropriated funds for Article 10 of the special town meeting from September 30, 2024, in the amount of $20,199 to complete the equipping and necessary modifications towards the fire engine, included but not limited to the portal radios, technology, so on and so forth. Thought I saw the fire chief there.
He was. He just, he just ran out the door. So, this was an old article that we got approved at town meeting, in the amount of $49,999. Mr. Chairman, he's expended roughly $29,800. Now his request is to amend that article, so that it changes the reading, and he can, with a new fire apparatus that he ordered, he wants to do some modifications to that, to the cab and the brand-new fire truck. So he's looking to take the remaining balance of that old article and use it on the brand-new fire apparatus that we brought to equip with certain equipment and do some work inside the cabin that doesn't come as a stock feature.
No additional money?
That's correct, there's no additional money. Motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor? Article 5, rescind Article 11, borrowing for an advanced life support ambulance, to see if the town will vote to rescind the unused borrowing authorization from Article 11 of the special town meeting from September 30, 2024, in the amount of $600,000 for purchase and equipping an ALS ambulance for the Acusha Fire and EMS Department.
That's just the, that's just the rescinding of the article, because the next article's gonna touch on how we're gonna actually do it.
Does a motion to approve Article 5?
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Article 6. Article Six. Funding the purchase of ALS ambulance in place of Article Eleven, September town meeting, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, file for, accept and expend grants into a matching funds provided by grants or otherwise providing some of sums, or sums of money not to exceed forty-seven thousand, to purchase and equip an advanced life support ambulance for the Kresner Fire and EMS, take any other action. Explanation upon rescinding the previous authorized borrowing for the ambulance, the board of selectmen is proposing to utilize three hundred and seventy-five thousand-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the board to discuss these two figures.
Okay, I'm just reading it, so, is this not accurate, what I'm reading, or?
I think it's something that the board has to discuss. These were put in, as you see, in a different color, it's placeholders.
Okay. Discuss it now, or?
Yes.
What are we discussing?
So you just, you, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the county guy interrupted when you were reading, so to be clear to the folks at home, the amount now is not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase and equip an advanced life support ambulance for the Kresner Fire EMS Department, or take any other action relative thereto, so. I apologize, it wasn't me that interrupted.
Right.
But just for the record, for the people at home, it's four hundred and seventy-five. The last one we rescind, we rescind it was for the amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
Less money, I mean-
Less money.
Okay.
So now we have to discuss the finance, how we're gonna fund the four seventy-five.
Okay.
Do you have a recommendation, because?
Would it be out of free cash?
We went back and forth, we went back and forth, and I think that's why I put those placeholders in. When discussing it with Mr. Gaspar, the focus is on making sure the EMS rechange earnings account is not depleted beyond an unsafe level. And I think Mr. Gaspar has the final figures that, when he convinced me not to look at July one through this period, and looked at exactly, because even though that's in, we can't count it the next three quarters, that it's gonna be the same. Looking at what's currently there, we, I depleted my figures to the eight hundred and thirty thousand, and now it's the board's decision on where they wanna go. Reminding the board that five hundred and fifty thousand is used to balance the budget. I would defer to Mr. Gaspar on his figures, because-
Mr. Chairman?
We spent hours talking about it yesterday.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Okay.
So, Mr. Kelly, in the finance team, we were kind of throwing numbers around, but if you read the explanation, what we currently have in EMS reserve receipt account is eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, so that's the number I tried to work off of. As Mr. Kelly alluded to, that would bring us, if we use two hundred thousand from EMS reserve receipt account, it would bring our balance down to six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And Mr. Kelly just alluded to, we use five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to balance the budget, the operating budget. So when I see six nineteen, I know five fifty, and I know Mr. Kelly just mentioned it's a revenue, EMS is a revenue account, and I get it, that we've generated two hundred and twenty in the first three months. The comment that I made to Mr. Kelly and the finance team is, when you stop looking at revenues, and you stop borrowing against future revenues, it becomes extremely dangerous when you stop having that as your practice. I'm a money in the bank kind of guy, and don't spend beyond your means. So at that point, I'm just a little bit alarmed, I'm not trying to alarm anybody, I'm not saying we're not gonna make the same kind of revenue. Fire EMS is doing a great job with revenue. The problem is, we never know if that revenue's gonna go down year over year, right? It's all about Medicaid reimbursements and all of that stuff, so. And how many ambulance rides we're given.
Okay.
So it's an unknown. I'm comfortable, and again, this is a board decision, not my decision. I'm just throwing different scenarios out there, without depleting all the free cashes, to use two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in free cash, and two hundred thousand dollars from EMS reserve receipt account. Before it was flipped by the chief, I wish he was here, but before we discussed this several months ago with Mr. Kelly, it was to take out two seventy-five from EMS reserve receipt accounts, and two hundred from free cash.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it either way, it just-
So this what's here, this three seventy-five and one hundred, that's, we shouldn't be paying attention to that, or?
Correct.
You could pay attention to any numbers that you wanna pay attention to, this is a board decision on how we do it. I'm just trying to balance everything that we have, and, you know, this, just because we have money in the bank, it's certain, sometimes we just, you're getting too far ahead of your skis, and you're spending money at an exorbitant rate that you can't keep up that run rate of expenditures, and I get concerned about that. And we're doing this without any debt exclusion, the board's got a great track record of doing this. I'm just trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can as a board to make those decisions for the future of the town, right?
So I mean, I think whenever we have to make a financial decision, you get to assess the risk, right? Like, what's the risk?
Correct.
I tend to agree with you, like, you know, with the reserves. I mean, if we've got money in free cash, like, I would err on the side of utilize more free cash, less from reserves. And then it becomes a conversation about what that number is, you know what I mean? It's a one-time expenditure, it's not like it's going to, you know, bodies and personnel, which we all say is a no-no, right? But capital, I don't know, you know, I mean, if we were to go with three seventy-five free cash and a hundred onto EMS reserves, what does that do to the, and does that put us in peril?
It kind of kills all, you ain't leaving much for the future town.
You're not leaving a lot of free cash for-
Fall.
Fall.
Spring, spring.
Sorry, yep. And I think the staff's target, knowing that we have all these expenditures that we have to do, the staff's target was between, leave between four hundred and five hundred thousand in the spring.
Okay, all right, let's, look.
So-
You can play, see how it plays out, right?
I don't know, I don't know your thoughts, Mr. Inkley on? I just don't wanna kill all the free cash, because we don't know what's coming for the spring, and leaving three, four hundred, because that's basically what we would be leaving, three or four hundred on the table.
Yeah, correct. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a tendency to agree with that, not knowing what's gonna come in the spring. I mean, like the chairman said, it's one-time expenses, so it's, you know, at least it's known now, but I also don't wanna deplete everything before the spring. I'd be on the side of the two seventy-five free cash, two hundred EMS reserve.
I'll second that.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I mean, you know, so we're discussing free cash, and we're gonna go into a budget season, but this is for like, you know, all departments. We can't have what happened at town meeting this past spring, where people go after free cash to fund-
Operating budgets.
Operating, we just can't do it.
Well, that was, you wanna talk about that?
No, no, I just wanna put it out there, like, because we're talking, we're doing hard work on free cash, and making some really, you know, tough decisions, and for the betterment of the town, and to go in, you know, with a crash helmet on, you know, do something different, I think is wrong. This is an example of like, we just don't, oh, let's just do this, right? You know?
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that actually brings up a good point, you know, whether you question it in the moment or not, so when it happens, it happens, but then you go forward, looking forward a couple of months later, and we see that it didn't actually have to happen. And you realize that just because you disagree with us, we're doing our honest effort to make the best possible practice for the town, and it turns out that we did actually do the right thing, it just didn't make sense. And I think it's good to note that, I don't like to toot my own horn, but I think together, the three of us work pretty well to make sure that we make educated, responsible decisions to better off the town.
Fair. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Looks like, Chief, you just get yourself an ambulance. Good job, good work, so. We were just talking about the ambulance and how we're gonna fund it, so we're looking at money out of free, combo platter of free cash and then EMS reserves, and it was two seventy-five out of free cash, two hundred out of EMS reserves. And, you know, we'll just keep watching that, watching the numbers. All right, very good.
Is that, that's good with you?
Mm-hmm.
Good. We just talked about the levels, right, of what's remaining in your EMS reserve receipt. And I know it's a revenue account, and I know that money's going, but we don't know what the rest of the year's gonna look like, right? And we talked about five fifty being used for the operating budget, you know the whole scenario, we talked about it. So the board just made the decision, as Mr. Chairman just said, two seventy-five free cash, two hundred EMS reserve receipt.
Next one is, I guess this is you, right? For, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from free cash, transfer from available funds, file for, accept and expend grants or matching funds provided by grants or otherwise provided some of money not to exceed thirty-five thousand for the purchase of a new radio system repeater. The repeater for the EMA DPW radio frequency, commonly referred to as government channel, is in need of an upgrade due to age and poor performance. The upgrades to our radio system will cap off a complete upgrade of all the emergency services, radio systems in the town of Kresner.
Correct. Last year, Mr. Chairman, we had an article, fiscal twenty-four, maybe, and we upgraded all the radio equipment, repeaters and such for the fire department frequencies. PD just went through their upgrade not that long ago, with their collaboration with Matta Poisoner Behavior. This is the last one that we have in town. It was extremely difficult communicating during Apple Peach Parade, between the weather and the condition of the repeater and the age of the repeater. It just, it was, it was a nightmare to try to communicate. So this'll complete everything that we need and carry the town and our emergency services well into the future.
Right, sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the way I look at it, if that's the case during Apple Peach, I think thirty-five thousand dollars in order to protect the health and safety of our community, and having all new equipment is well worth it.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
All right, to take out a free cash.
Free cash.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. I think that's it, right? Do you, Chief?
There was one more.
We took care of that, the rescinding of the article, the forty-nine, nine, 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 and then redirected some of that money for the new fire apparatus, for equipment and cabin fixtures.
Correct.
It's all set.
Perfect.
That's all.
Thank you.
Next one, who asked me collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Inkley, this is your baby.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At the moment, we are waiting for one final response from the union, but it's looking, moving swimmingly. I would ask that it is placed on the town meeting morning, and I will have an updated, fully redlined copy for you within the next week.
Awesome.
This involves no additional funds.
Gotcha. All right.
Motion to approve Article Eight.
Second. All those in favor? All right. All right. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from free cash or transfer from available funds a sum of six hundred and twenty-five thousand to fund FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five health insurance claims in excess of premiums. Sodical will fund any past claims of deficits as a result of the unexpected costs of catastrophic cases, past IBNR runout claims and associated litigation costs of the town to prosecute the case. Mr. Kelly, this is your baby.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are in litigation with the MSHG over this. There is a, there were catastrophic cases there, contesting our IBNR runout that we actually paid. We've retained an attorney, the attorney advises that we put this sum aside. He's not saying that it would be this amount, but he said this could be the maximum amount. If all things go against us, he's not advising that, but he wants to go to court to show that we have put this money aside in good faith, and that we are going forward with our litigation.
Got it, so we may not even refer.
We don't know the amount.
Understood.
We have an independent auditor going through the books. MSHG hasn't presented us with their independent audit. In addition, in the health insurance field, it takes up to six months for all of the billings to come in from the doctors and the pharmaceuticals, and then it takes an additional six months for pharmaceutical rebates and stop-loss insurance payments. This is on advice of council to show our good faith and to keep our claims against MSHG valid.
Got it, all right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next article is part of our conservation commission reform efforts. It is to reduce the number of the commission from seven to five. We've talked about this before, it's, you know, the right thing to do. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I got you, gentlemen, while we're talking concom, just a brief update, is I'll be sitting in on some interviews next week with some potential applicants. And then in addition, we've asked Chance Perks, who is the conservation agent in New Bedford, he's agreed, he's coming in, I think it's Monday, or Tuesday, one of these days this week, to sit down with Joanne to help get that office organized and look at best practices, and just, he's gonna do an assessment on how things are done over there. Hopefully, we can tap into his technical expertise, so this is gonna be, you know, an evolving project, but hopefully, we can get it done and get things squared away over there.
Excellent.
So, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, that's good to hear. I'm glad Chance is willing to work with us. He's a straight shooter, and he really enjoys his job, so I think that would be a benefit to that department.
Good. All right, next article is Article Number Eleven. It's for clubhouse, golf course clubhouse borrowing, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Golf Enterprise Reserve Fund, transfer from the Golf Enterprise Retained Earnings Fund, transfer from Golf Enterprise Earnings, transfer from available funds, borrow, file for, accept and expend grants into a matching funds provided by grants or otherwise providing some or sums of money not to exceed three point five million dollars, or to design, engineer, construct, purchase, equip a golf course clubhouse in legal expenses or take any other action relative thereto. This gives us the maximum flexibility to fund this project. You know, what I was most concerned about, and I think the board and you guys on the committee, was the not-to-exceed number, you know, and I think what you've put forward is livable. Obviously, we wanna drive down costs, being as creative as possible with either in-house staff or whatever. I'm less concerned about, I'm more concerned about the number, less concerned how we get there. So I think this gives us as much flexibility to tap into existing funds, do bands. I know Kevin's put a lot of work into this, so I'll turn this over to you and Jamie to talk about that, you know, the funding mechanism.
Mr. Chairman, I did spend a couple of days with the finance team, a few hours each day with the finance team. Mr. Kelly, going through this, and again, you're reading off a newly revised article. And I talked to Mr. Kelly on the phone yesterday, because of the way the whole article was written, we didn't have engineering and legal expenses in there, but that's been added, I thought I heard something.
And design.
Yep.
And design and all that stuff, right? So we encapsulate all of that, what the committee needs to do now, moving forward. We encapsulate everything that needs to be done, so they can continue moving this project forward, right? We're dialoguing with the board of selectmen, because we've talked about concerns about the design, and I know they did their best putting something forward to get us to this point, to do this. So to at least get the appropriation and the funding from town meeting now, and then we can spend time with the golf management committee, talking about the design, the floor plan and all that. That can come at any given point. That can come at any given point. All this is doing is authorizing the board of selectmen to sign on behalf of the Golf Enterprise Fund for funding sources to keep engineering moving forward. Um, we did, in the amount of three point five million dollars, I did do some research on what golf has in retained earnings, because I'm a stickler with, I don't like high debt payments, I don't like putting, I wouldn't wanna put the Golf Enterprise Fund under unnecessary financial pressure, as we've seen some ten years ago. So, um, I know Mr. Flynn put out an email. I looked that over real quick this morning, it came in last night or whatever. Um, and then we've run some numbers ourselves, so my recommendation would be for the, the same amount, the three point five million dollars, understanding we have two point, oh, two point two-five million dollars in retained earnings. I ran the numbers on a band for two point two-five million dollars, taking one point two-five million out of retained earnings. So that would be, now, we would borrow, if we needed to borrow the two point two-five million, and we got some schedules here. And I did do it on a five-year plan. Um, I know Mr. Flynn threw out the whole number on his plan. Um, the interest on his was seven years. The interest on a five-year band, if you were to do the two point two-five million on a five-year band, the cumulative interest after five years would be two twenty-five on Mr. Flynn's schedule. The seven years for the three point five, you'd be paying us four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in interest. That's a difference of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, just in interest. So my recommendation to the board, to the town, would be take one point two-five out of retained earnings. That leaves them with one million dollars current in the bank in retained earnings, and we can band up to two point two-five million to get us to the three point five. And this is a five-year plan. But what I didn't know about bands, I've learned a lot in the last couple of days, and I spoke to some outside people as well, financial people as well, because I really wanted to do a deep dive. Mr. Kelly's got a really good handle on the band stuff, but, and I didn't have this conversation with Mr. Kelly. We don't need to band the whole amount right out of the gate. So we have one point two-five in retained earnings through this borrowing to get us to three point five. We've met the objective of the committees, three point five. What we don't need to do, we have that to spend right away, right out of the gate. When we go through this process, if we need a million bucks, you can then just go and band a million. This is a debt schedule on two point two-five million, go for the whole thing out of the gate.
Sounds like a home equity.
It's what it is, right? So, and Mr. Kelly, if I, if I speak wrong on a band, I'm not the professional. Y'all the one that introduced bands to the town of Acushnet, you know, I, I said to him yesterday, we do, we've done so many damn bands, I feel like I'm in a band. Um, but anyways, I, I think, some people might have a difference of opinion, but I have a strong opinion on this. My finance team agreed with, with what I proposed because of the amount of interest. We just, we ran this scenario on two point two-five, and my interest payment's way lower than Mr. Flynn's. And I know Mr. Flynn was going after the three point five and not going after money out of retained earnings. You absolutely need to take money from retained earnings to save on this project, and, and that balloon payment was in over the six hundred thousand dollar mark. We've never paid a principal and interest on that golf course over six hundred thousand dollars. So this payment, if you were to go straight out of the gate, your maximum payment in year one is five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Still a number that's uncomfortable, but again, if we have our one point two-five, keeps engineering, all that stuff going forward, think we can all figure out what we wanna do, you start digging into that money first. We need a million bucks, we go out and band. The nice thing about bands is, instead of bonding, once you bond, you're screwed, you're fixed, you're stuck in that deal for five years, ten years. With bands, we can go in and just grab whatever money we need. We don't need to necessarily, the way this plan was laid out, the two point two-five, the remainder of the three point five, grab all that money at once and pay that exorbitant interest on it. And what happens with that two point two-five? You don't use it in year one. When you go to re-band, you basically give that money, whatever was unspent, back to the company. They do all their paperwork, they charge you another five grand, that's another additional cost of bands, but it's, it's worth it. And they just give you back whatever money was unspent. So I'm like, well, then that's when I picked up the phone, I started talking to people, and I talked to Mr. Kelly, and I'm like, well, if that's the case, then I don't need two point two-five out of the gate. We can, we can incrementally do this year after year after year, and, and we can just end. And you don't wanna do that, because you don't have that new clubhouse generating that free cash flow anymore, right? So once we get to that, we'll be in really good shape. We do have the current state of what we have. I would, I think the board would like to have this project done, in my opinion, as fast as possible.
Agreed.
I, I don't need to do all the other stuff, but I think there's been an appetite. I know by the chairman, you've had a strong appetite about getting a clubhouse. I've had a strong appetite. Mr. Hinkley demonstrated, said you've been on the board, get a clubhouse, what it can do for the community. I, I don't wanna not have an article for the golf course come fall town meeting. I think we owe it to the committee, and we owe it to ourselves and the people of the community to say, we're ready to go. Granted, first draft that was presented to the board, would, things are gonna be changed, it's okay. This is what we're gonna do, and this is the maximum we're gonna spend. So I, I, I know Mr. Flynn's not here, so I don't wanna keep talking to him. I just looked at his plan, um, paying a lot more in interest and borrowing the three point five. My recommendation to the board is pull one point two-five million dollars from retained earnings. You leave them a comfortable one million dollars, um, for anything unforeseen issues that may happen at the golf course in future work. And we move forward with this project at three point five million dollars.
Yeah. I think, you know, this article gives us as much flexibility to do it. You know, theoretically, if you bring in a, a nice facility, you should be making more money. You know, at some point, you might have to look at price adjustments for round of golf as well, right? Like, you know, I think we're, I think we, I don't wanna say, because we don't have such a great facility, I think we've been smart about how we approach what we charge, right? But I think if you're providing an A-plus experience, then you can charge an A-plus, you know, come up with a, a pricing schedule that maximizes that. So I think it's great. The other thing, again, I don't like to confuse issues, but since you're here, you know, how we operate the clubhouse, you know, I think the golf management committee has to seriously look at, okay, do you put it out to bid, you know, for a private entity to run the food and beverage operation? Because I don't know, as a town, we, we can be in the business of running a restaurant, you know, that's not our thing. Dana and the team does all you can just to get golfers to golf, and if the two are separate, and, you know, I think that could be an opportunity for us, where it's, you know, you're gonna fix, fix payment in a percentage of whatever it is. Um, there's probably some really great hospitality entities in the area that would, that would love to do something like that, you know? So just be as flexible and open to suggestions as possible as you look at this new, uh, this new chapter. I think it's gonna be really exciting for us. Um, and, uh, I'm appreciative of the work you've done, Kevin. Same, when I say aye, it's not aye, but, you know, there's been a lot of work.
It's a wee thing.
Right. It's a lot of work behind the scenes, and you guys are on the front lines every day, so thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So is there a motion to approve Article eleven?
Article eleven, with the recommended funding.
With using one point two-five million in retained earnings and, well, under the borrowing is where there is two point two-five in borrowing cost. And again, that's a, that's a discretion.
Well, you don't have to get that prescriptive in the article, do you?
No, it'll be in the motion.
Right.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, yeah. The motion is gonna dictate, the motion will dictate the terms of where financing is coming from. Once we get that, we're free and clear. To be able to allow the committee to continue moving forward, continue dialogue with engineers, continue planning and having discussions with the board way ahead of time, so things aren't being thrown at us at the last minute and saying, digest that and hurry up and give me a, a recommendation. I mean, I think it's, the, how we're gonna end up with the greatest product in this town is with this board and that golf management committee having real dialogue over, over the next several months, whatever it is, year, and really figuring out what best is suited at that clubhouse, for that clubhouse in this town.
Bottom line is, we're going forward with the article. Now it's up to you to talk to as many Acushnet residents who care about the golf course to get to the town meeting. So it's a motion to approve the article.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, just to fill in, uh, to remind the board, bands are the, under the board's authority. At any point, you can instruct the treasurer, collector. Uh, also to remind the board, uh, fiscal twenty-six, your, uh, large payment on the uh, bond issue, it goes down for fiscal twenty-seven, and it goes substantially down to, for fiscal twenty-eight for the original purchase bond that was extended. Uh, and, uh, I would call to the board's attention, uh, the finance team, uh, Jamie Velasquez, Jen Durant, they've worked very hard on this with Mr. Gaspar to go through all of the scenarios that came up with this, and I, I heartily endorse this one. It's a very good scenario for the town.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to echo what you said the other night at the meeting, for anybody listening at home, this is not three point five million or two point two-five paid for by taxation. This is an enterprise fund that would be self-funded. The band payment would be paid from earnings from the golf course, so this will not affect taxation.
Right. Thank you. All right. Next article, twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate transfer from free cash, transfer from the special capital expenditure fund from sole tax revenue or transfer from available funds a sum of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars or take any other action relative thereto. All right. So, uh, special capital expenditure fund from sole tax revenue was created, was created in 2013 to pay for specific capital expenditures such as school roof project. Funding for this legislatively created fund is earmarked as sole tax revenue. The final payment of this participatory, anticipatory note will eliminate any future interest payments and relieve the town of the costs of converting the band to a regular bond borrowing instrument. It is the intent of the board of selectmen to retire the band with use of free cash or funding in the special capital expenditure fund from the sole tax revenue fifty-two thousand six hundred and forty-eight bucks.
Mr. Chairman? We did it.
Yeah.
Once we, once we.
I think something more than that.
Once we, once we, once we get this, if, if longest town meeting approves this article, when I said, we did it, we made a commitment to the taxpayers somewhere in 2020, I think it was, in 21, and I think it might've been nineteen when this dialogue started about this roof, and there was fifty percent, like fifty-two percent reimbursed by MSBA, and we said, we're gonna fund our share from sole tax revenue and free cash to get rid of that payment, not put that one point three million dollars of debt as a debt exclusion and raise taxes on the taxpayers of Acushnet. So when I say, we did it, we did it. So this is the final payment, it's done and over with. That one point three million dollars is gone. It's, it's nice to get rid of debt, and it's nice to be able to tell the taxpayers and the people, this is what our plan is, this is what we're gonna do. They believe in us to, to do it, and we executed it. And I, and I'll be honest, I think it was geniusly executed, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Article twelve in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two from free cash, and the remaining fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight from special capital expenditure solo.
Can you give me that first figure?
Yes, sir. The first figure is two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars from free cash, and the remaining of the two ninety-five would come from the sole capital expenditure fund, tax revenue of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next article, thirteen, I guess you got, done one, now you got another one. Uh, funding repairs to the elementary school roof and gymnasium, uh, to see if the, of the band repayment, is that right?
No.
Okay. All right. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrowed transfer from free cash or transfer from available funds a sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and take any other action therein. Is there a motion, uh, for, they get, they need some repairs to the roof over there?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, originally, when you, gentlemen, solved the first problem, the, the main roof, this smaller roof that's a lower level roof, uh, right outside of the gym, it actually houses the gym closet, um, has had some issues, and that roof was never redone. Um, so with everything else that's going on with the school, we wanna take care of the problem that we can right now, while we still work. We're actively working on trying to come to a solution on the, the main part of the problem, but this would be a big chunk of it. There is some water penetration in that.
Control probably contributes to the problem.
It does, and I had asked, um, Dr. Bailey and Aldo to put together a fund, an amount to get this handled, and, um, this should be more than enough to cover repairing, replacing, fixing any part of that gym roof.
Okay. Great.
I'd like to just take an opportunity to thank Selectman Hinkley for his hard work with the school. Um, you know, the teachers, the school business administration, Mr. Hinkley spends an exorbitant amount of time trying to stay on top of this issue. It's been a pressing issue for the town. I'm glad that he's taken that, um, responsibility on, and I know he's continuing to work with everybody, all the parties involved, so kudos to Mr. Hinkley, and thank you, Mr. Hinkley, for your efforts.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We do have some, some future repairs to do there. We need to make sure we take care of that, so.
Yeah.
For your efforts, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I appreciate you guys, um, letting me tackle this. Um, I do have a vested interest in the schools, I wanna make sure, and I'm continually in constant dialogue, trying to come to a resolution and figure this out.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Do we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
From free cash.
So, Mr. Kelly, you got two others? Bobby, you got something on, uh, Paper Streets or something?
Uh, yes, I would like to add an article, if it's okay with you, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Kelly, do you need to do anything with fourteen and fifteen before I do that?
Uh, you can do that, and then we'll return to fourteen and fifteen.
Perfect. Um, so, gentlemen, we've had a couple of requests to discontinue some Paper Streets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two requests total. So if it's at the pleasure of the board, I would like to propose Article sixteen as, to see if the town will vote to discontinue as a public way. Those portions of Conduit Street, more or less depicted on town assessor's maps and described as follows. Number one, between Darling Street and Meadow Lane is bounded by Assessor's Map twenty-four, lots fourteen A, fifteen, fifteen T, and fifteen Y. Number two, between Meadow Lane and Westland Street is bounded by Assessor's Map twenty-four, lots twelve D, twelve E, thirteen E, and fourteen H. And number three, the entirety of Beacon Street bounded by Assessor's Map fifteen, lots two, four, three, two, four, six, and five, seven, four. And further, to authorize the board of selectmen to convey and release such interests in land as the town may hold in said discontinued portions upon such terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. All right. We got fourteen and fifteen, these are just cleanup articles.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll take fifteen first. It's to amend the CPC article we passed in the spring. Uh, we're going to keep the standard percentages in the various categories, but we also put a dollar amount in that, and, uh, now, uh, since CPC is collecting more money 'cause house values have increased, uh, we need to increase that value.
Right. So, while you're on that subject, I mean, look, I think we all agree that CPC is an awesome thing, right? By the same token, as you just said right now, we're, we're collecting more money because of house values. I mean, should we have a discussion about, can we cap that, you know, like as a town, and say, look, you know, we kinda know what the projects we have? I don't know. and say, look, you know, we kind of know what the projects we have, I don't know, it just feels like, you know, if we're at 2023 standard versus a 2025, you know, are we going to really hurt the town from a project standpoint? Sometimes I feel like we, you know, we look for projects.
Yeah.
I don't know, just.
Mr. Chairman, I've actually had a lot of conversation about this lately, and I'm sure there's a lot more information than I need to dive into, but CPC is a great program. Essentially, it's a sergey, so it's a tax on a tax, basically. And the state allows you to go up to 3%. I believe we're at 1.5. I think if we had, we have a little room to work, but I think we could actually functionally lower that, which will give a little bit of relief to the taxpayers. It's not going to be like enough to go out and buy a car, but, you know, we're all watching assessed values go through the roof and tax bills go through the roof, and you can spend so much time explaining to people, we're doing the best we can with what we have, but when people see their tax bills go up and see their services stay kind of level, I think it's a very honest discussion we could have, where if we lowered it, we'd still be taking the same money on a lower percentage as we were when CPC was adopted.
Right, right, that's the point.
And you don't really sacrifice anything in the dollar terms of it, and you can still put through projects, that makes sense.
I mean, we've done some great projects, but like with anything, you know, like if it's, if it takes time to get there, if it's a saving, you know, if it's year three, you're going to save up three years on the recreational side to do a big project.
Yep.
I think we should look at that for sure. What's the mechanics of that? Is that a town meeting vote, or is that a?
I believe it would be a town meeting vote and very possibly certification by DOR. I would think that's probably an article for the spring.
Agreed.
Okay.
It is, it is definitely a town meeting vote. We voted CPA in 2004 in this town, so however, however you institute something into the town, i.e., CPA was done by town meeting, in order to change it, it requires a town meeting vote as well. So it would be an amendment to that article of the 1.5.
And that's when the rate was set? I was curious as to who sets the rate, town meeting sets the rate?
No, the town meeting sets the rate, and DOR then approves the collection of the funds.
Can we run the numbers on what it would look like if we did it, if we reduced it to 1%, 0.5%, just to see what the savings would be for, you know, the average homeowner?
That's a simple, simple calculation I can pull from, with Ms. Koska.
Yeah.
Because it's just, it's just based on the value of property, right? So CPA was, if your house is worth $400,000, in that clause, the first $100,000 is exempt. So now you're based at, 1.5 is based on your $300,000 valuation. So it's easy enough to pull in, she pulls it in at 1.5, then you just take that number and put 1% and pull the number in and see what the, what the, what the revenue number is. And again, I think both of you guys just touched on it, that's why I just keep my mouth shut, but home prices have gone up exorbitantly, right? And I know it's, I think Mr. Inkley said, per quarter, it might be 15 bucks or 20 bucks, but 15 or 20 bucks to some people is a lot of money.
Mm-hmm. I mean, here's the deal, right? I mean, I don't know what the numbers would be, but if it, if it ends up covering somebody's excise tax on their vehicle, then that's worth it, right?
Correct.
You know, something like that, I don't know.
Most, most excise taxes, bills after the six-year depreciation is probably sitting around a 60 buck mark, so if you save 15 bucks a quarter on CPC, there's your 60 bucks for excise tax.
Yep.
So math works.
All right, what was the next one?
The next one is, talking to our consultant, he advised we amend the water department revenue figures we filed. I'm still in discussions with him. I'm going to actually have staff and others in the discussion with him because I think I have a disagreement on the necessity for this article, but he is our expert with DOR, and I'm going to ask that if it is, if it is deemed necessary by DOR and our consultant, we include the article in the warrant, otherwise it'll be, and then we can pass over it if we decide.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
And the most, did we make a motion to approve the CPC?
Oh, I think we did.
So motion to approve, was that Article 14?
15.
15.
Motion to approve Article 15 as well, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries. I think we're good, and I'm going to venture to guess, this is probably like the best shape we've been in when it comes to going into a Fall Town Meeting. This will hopefully get us on the right path to then start doing like tax rates and all that stuff, right?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate the board, and none of the articles were raised and appropriated. And you do not have to touch the excess levy capacity that you established in the spring. Mr. Gaspar then doesn't have to, he told me I stole some of his money.
It's already gone down, just saying. I watched the number like a hawk, and I'm like, that'd be enough of that. Well, that determines tax rate on, on the people, right? And the board's objective is try to keep, do the best to keep that down as much as we can, and that was, that's a way to do it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All right, motion carries.
Great.